We're going to get started, so we don't keep these good folks hurt for all night. I want you all first to know that when we put this together, we invited every single city council person. That was right. And we also invited the marijuana candidates. Folks you see are the folks that actually felt that you were important enough to actually come and speak and learn about. So for me, it's big for me that when I see these things or I see people watch the character taking time out of their day, these are the kind of folks that I look at to be voting for. So the platform, quick, easy, and painless, where we're not here to do any kind of CNN debating, nothing like that. About five to 10 minutes on each candidate, they'll introduce themselves, you can get to know them a little bit better. And then after that, they'll have some questions. For those of you who don't know, this is Aisha Wahab, we have Didicus Ramos, and Sarah Leffler.
Sure. So, good evening, everybody. First of all, we thank you to the board for putting this together. Really appreciate the opportunity to meet you all and to be in this beautiful room. And I've been honored to serve as your city council member for the last four years. And in that time, we've made tremendous progress. My focus is about including people in the decisions that affect their lives. And the amount of transparency, making sure that committee meeting agendas and materials get out early so that the community can comment. Publishing lists that tell you when public meetings are happening and what those are about. Making sure that as we think through various issues in the community, that the community voice has a place to be heard. And then specifically on issues, we've been working on fiscal transparency and accountability. Making sure that our budget is balanced, not just for year to year, but really for the long term. We've got a five-year strategy in place now to get that done. I've also been testifying in Sacramento to fight against policies that sort of get made up there where we have to pay for. And to make sure that dollars that do get allocated do reach us here in Hayward. I've been working with our blue-to-fire systems and other areas to make sure that our city is as safe as possible so that people can really thrive here. And then also working on housing affordability, which is a huge issue. And for a lot of these, I feel like we've made tremendous progress, but we're right on the edge of wow, the place that we can really get to. And so that's a big piece of why I'm running. Again, there's even more I want to do in the next four years. But part of it is really seeing through the changes that I've just started in the last couple of years.
I'm Didicus, and it's good to see both new citizens and more seasoned citizens. And that's wonderful, and that's what Hayward is too. Because we're the most diverse city in the Bay Area and in California, and we're the fourth most first in the country.
Great.
The third most first in the entire country. So this is where people from the world come. Yeah. Isn't it? It's fascinating, and it's wonderful. It's wonderful, because when you go to the other places in the country, you see how if they had what we have in Hayward, they would have been all that much more rich in their lives. And they're not. They're seeing the same culture over and over again, and other cultures come in that are diverse about it. In Hayward, we're engaging in cultures coming in, we're used to them coming in, we want them to come in. Now, we have a different issue. And the issue is one of how inclusive can we be? I think that we can include people in a lot more things, in a lot more of the essence of Hayward and in the economy of Hayward. There's still a huge amount of people that are living here that are not included in our economy, and we have to do what is necessary to include them in the economy. Why? Because the measure of success of an economy is not how many millionaires or billionaires you have in it. The measure of successful economy is how many people in the community you have successfully engaged in the economy. So if you have people that are just hanging on, that's not successfully engaged. You have to have people that are actually functioning and benefiting from our economy. And that's something that we have to change in order to do that. What is the key to that? The key to that is access. That if you can get to the goods and services that you need and be among the community that you want to be among, then you have success that comes from that. Short of that, what you have is people getting in their car and going to some other community seeking success over there. To build success here, we need access. Now downtown Hayward, you have an example of what access was, but isn't right now. That needs to change, and it is changing slightly. Once we get rid of the loop, I think that a lot of the problems that happens because of it will go away. And Sarah was not there to vote on that. I'm under compliance by profession, and I gave the city council three reports telling them, whatever you do, don't build a loop. And I think they said, "Thank you." And that's as far as I'm concerned. So I am for changing things like making C Street the two-way street. Again, making Fort Worth Boulevard a two-way street again, and then eventually making it A Street. Mission Street is problematic because it's part of the state highway, and the control issue is a question. But we can deal with that and do the other things. Two-way traffic means that your businesses are better served. Now, that's the downtown area, that was a classic area, and that's something that we all kind of gravitate towards. But if you live out in Fairway Park, or if you live in Tennesse and Desperian, then downtown is another city from you. It's not, you have a mailing address of Hayward, but your attachment to Hayward is different. You're more attached to Mount Eton, and that's how I, when I go down to those neighborhoods and talk to them, that's how they talk. "I'm from Mount Eton." "You're from Hayward." "Yeah, but I'm from Mount Eton." I go, "Okay, I get it. You identify with this part of Hayward as your functioning center." And that's fine, except we can't get many of the goods and services you need in Mount Eton. We can't get many of the goods and services you need in Fairway Park. And you can't get, from here to those places, there's a desert of goods and services that needs to be corrected. I watched Hayward, I grew up here. You're sitting on my grandfather's farm. So this was his farm. And he broke it up into some housing developments, you see some of the colleges that we built. We lived in one that was built in 1920. But as a kid, I watched as those fields were taken from crops to housing developments. And they became housing tracts, and they became sterile housing tracts. Forty percent of them were concrete and asphalt. They were intentionally built that you needed a car to get anything that you wanted. And if you didn't have a car, well, then the answer was, don't live here. And that became an automatic way of making most of the United States separated. That's how they kept us separated, because only people that were on the economic line could do that. Today, we've changed a lot of that, and this room, the diversity in this room, proves that. That more and more of our people are being included in the economy. But getting them to be prosperous in that economy, effective and successful, that's the challenge, and that leaves access. So we need to reconfigure our housing tracts and the strip malls that soak it together into accessible lanes cutting through so we can walk to, rather than get in a car and go a quarter mile all the way around, we cut a lane through and we walk to the stores and the offices that we need. We have our businesses closer to where we are. We actually changed our zoning laws so that we can have industrial parks near our housing. You don't have to put dangerous things near your housing, but industrial parks where people are going there and making some things, the light industry, doing business, doing high-tech. That can happen walking distance from where you live. What happens when you get more people walking and fewer people getting in your cars? You have less people complaining about all the congestion, and all the pollution, and all the noise. And that's the whole idea, is that then you start to relate to people, person to person, instead of person to person in a car. That's coming down to a 25 or 50 miles an hour when the sign says 30. All right, so that's what we call community building. And that's the essential part of what I stand for. Now, the mechanics of the city are antiquated. That's probably why we're finding so much to update them. The city is basically oriented towards a 1950s mentality. That's the mentality that built those housing tracts. That's the mentality that separated all of us. And that's the mentality that puts us into the bind that we are now with pollution, with congestion, and with the accessibility of low-income jobs here in Hayward instead of the higher-income jobs that are on Peninsula. Changing the education system. Yeah, this is the city council, so we don't do that directly, but we do have influence on that. And we need a lot of coordination between the council and the school district. Because when they build a school, or when they allocate where people are going to go to school, we want that to be a community school. We want that to be the selling point of that neighborhood, that their kids can walk to school, that they don't have to take a bus, that they don't have to get in a car, that they can actually get there. Now, as far as work goes, and getting to and from work in the industrial area, and I'll finish this off. That's why I advocate transportation based on like scooters, bicycles, ready-to-bicycles, and walking. Obviously, walking would be the highest priority. Vehicles that are not cars would be the next priority. And then finally, public transportation, but public transportation that works, shuttles, co-vans and things like that, over AC transit. There was one AC transit route that you fought for. That was a great idea. I'm glad I argued it, and I'm glad I argued for it, even though the three council members, not you, but the other three council members that I argued with didn't think that there was any value in it, and told me that it just doesn't pencil out. It was for a shuttle service that would take people from the BART station down to the industrial area. Sarah was able to get AC Transit to change one of their routes. Actually, they came to the city council and said they would change one of their routes. But what they didn't tell us is that they were going to cut a route to Chauvin College while they did that. So this is what we have. We have some stupidity in large economies that we need to stand up and say, "If that's the way you're going to do it, then please leave our town and let us try to do it the way Union City did, which they formed their own transportation department."
Yes.
"They own their own buses." And they work. They work. Why do they work? Because the people have a more direct control of it, saying like, "This is my bus that you're dealing with. I want my bus to actually take me to where I have to go." And I want accessibility, so let those offices, let those jobs come closer to where I live. One way you can do that is next to you is put the housing on top of the stores. You have access to the community from those stores and to those housing elements there. And that way, you can also include a lot more people in our community. Now, when you do that, though, we're not talking about renters. We're talking about making people into owners, own those houses. Why? Because those become stakeholders. And there's no stronger stakeholder than somebody who owns something. And that's the classic American dream, owning, not renting it, but owning it. When you rent it and times get hard, you go away. When you own it and times get hard, you double down and you say, "No, I have a voice in this, and I'm not going to just give it up." So that's an important point of any community building, is being stakeholders. All right, that's enough for everybody to, I'm sure, crunch on for a long time, but we'll retain questions after that anyway.
Remember your question, though.
So my name is Aisha Wahab. I'm running for Hayward City Council. I am running as a challenger primarily. Getting colder, sorry, so I was ready to run. So the primary reason why I'm running is because out of everything that we've seen in the last two years or so, it makes you question how much involvement you have, how much you can do as a person, and what can you do. Now, I have personally grown up in foster care. I rely on community services more than many, many people, even in this room potentially. I know what it means to rely on community. And with that said, I've served many years doing community organizing. I'm a board member of several nonprofits. I've helped with mental health services. I sat on boards that provide housing for low and extra income individuals. And I've even opened up my own small business for a short time. That was very short-lived during the economic downturn. And for the most part, we see what we can do and what we should be doing. Now, as an individual that has served as the chair of the Human Relations Commission, as a Women's March organizer, as just a community advocate, I felt that this was my time to kind of step up, as we know that all politics is local, and the change that we want, we can implement in our local city. Now, one of the biggest drivers for me in Hayward was housing. Now, housing in Hayward has changed dramatically. For an average household income of $65,000 a year, that family needs to earn more than $100,000 to qualify for the average home price in Hayward. This is very, very difficult for many families. And as Didicus mentioned, Hayward is a very diverse community. A community with a lot of different cultures, languages, educational backgrounds, and financial background. And as you mentioned earlier, the number-one American dream for many people is to own your own home. But that's becoming harder and harder. And we see our children struggle. We see our grandchildren potentially not even going to be raised in an area that we raised our children in. So for example, my sister and I both have a master's degree. She's a master's in social work, and I have a master's in business. Now, with that said, we have student loans, we have our families to pay care of. We have, our parents are aging and having health problems. My father just had a kidney transplant. And we take a look at that and say, "They had a different lifestyle, a different American dream, one that they could actually achieve." Now, today, with the degrees, with a good steady income, three earners can't even rent in Hayward anymore. We know that. And those are some of the problems and the stories that I've been hearing from all different community members. Now, one of the differences for me is that as a millennial, you know, growing up and hearing that if you do A, B, and C, your life is set. We know that's not the truth anymore. So I think that the reason why so many younger folks are coming out and stepping up is because we want to stay in our future. We want to stay in our family lives, and we want to stay in our community. So I've decided to run for Hayward City Council because I feel that we can affect change in a more robust way. Now, Hayward is, as I was mentioning to you, for example, in rent control was one of 15 cities in the entire state of California that had rent control ordinance. Now, we're not talking about rent control for every single unit, right? That's just unfeasible and also inappropriate, if you will. I'm talking about safety nets. So roughly 30 years ago, we had rent control like 22,000 units. Today, it covers possibly 1,600 units. Now, with that being said, just imagine about 20,000 just disappeared, right? And there are seniors on fixed incomes that live in Hayward that are no longer able to live in Hayward. They're being pushed out of their homes and off the street. There are students at Cal State East Bay that are living in their cars and pretending that they have a home and using vehicles to wash themselves. These are the things that we're seeing in Hayward. Now, that is just one happening. Now, we see all the development that's happening in Hayward, and I'm happy. I'm very, very happy. We should be developing very smartly and very intentionally. Where are we going to develop? How high are we going to develop? Now, I personally am not a fan of the tri-story homes, if you will, just primarily because I have a father who I know can't walk stairs at this point, right? So it's not for communities that I grew up in where your father's going to live with you or something else. We know that. So I would like more intentional development in the sense of one-story flat and then an elevator to go to the second story for people that have disabilities, if you will. When we talk about our school system. Our school system, if you want to raise a family, and many, many young families that come into Hayward decide many if they end up having, maybe their first baby. They rate their school systems, and Hayward schools are not that bad, to be honest with you. Their graduation rates are at 86%, which is the state's level. However, we know we can do better and then one better for students and our children. You know, we have three colleges in Hayward, and we don't have a relatively good relationship with the three colleges nor with the school board. This has been public. You know, we've had public meetings where people come to each other's meetings and say not-so-nice things about each other. The reality is that we need to work as a community. Our youth, our seniors, our working families, all make this community what it is. And I want to strengthen that. So when I talk about, and I believe all of you guys have a handout, I laid out what I'm fighting for very, very simply. It's fair housing, public safety, economic development, and regional leadership. And the reason why I say regional leadership is primarily because Hayward is one, as they mentioned, one of the largest cities in East Bay, and one of the most diverse cities. And we should be tapping into that diversity to make us the strongest city in East Bay. For the most part, a lot of our issues are regional issues. However, how are we teaming up with some of these other cities to address some of our traffic issues, to address our crime, to address our jobs? Now, it's nice to say that we're going to do everything within the city and think that if I build housing here and the jobs are here, we can all just stay in one city. Now, I'm one person that commutes to San Jose every single day. I live and commute to San Jose and from San Jose, and I will tell you it's a brutally long one, right? Right? Yeah. And I personally even bought a hybrid, electric hybrid, just so I can have that H O V lane sticker. And it's useless at this point, yes. So it takes me, it kills me, about 15 extra minutes for me, right? I regret. And now, the reason why I bring that up is because jobs have been moving, right? Jobs are now on Peninsula, in San Francisco, in Oakland, in San Jose, in Fremont, you name it. Now, the reason why housing is still one of the number-one issues for me is because at the end of the day, even if you move to the Fresnos, the Tracy's, the more Central Valley area, if not a little bit further out to Stockton and things like that, that I personally don't want to move to. You're still community in here for your jobs. Now, that reduces the quality of life of every family. It's not just the individual that's making the community, it's the family. You know, I have a cousin who cooks, and she comes home at roughly about 7:00 at night. She puts her kids to sleep at 9:00. And I said, "So you always spend two hours with your kid?" And she said, "Pretty much." And luckily, she has her mother that does care when the kids are out of school. This is not a quality of life that is that iconic American dream, right? That is what I want to strengthen. When we talk about economic development, to be quite clear, Hayward can do so much more in regards to economic development. We've spent so many years on downtown Hayward, and we know downtown is still not the downtown that we have in our own minds as to where we want to eat, where we want to shop, and where we want to hang out on weekends with family and friends. Parking is very, very difficult. Traffic is pretty tough there, too. And as they reference the loop as the major part in that. Now, for us, when we talk about economic development, you have to also understand businesses are changing rapidly, just as rapidly as our society is changing. They even say, and I'm a business IT consultant by trade. As a business IT consultant, and I work closely with our chief information officer, and the concept is primarily that as fast as technology has moved in the past, it's going to move even faster in the next five years. And the reason for that is because some of the most powerful machines are at your fingertips, and it's just getting more powerful. Almost people are getting rid of their computers. They're getting rid of a lot of the technology that we have historically grown up with. The large, big TV. You know, now it's watch TV on the go, on your phone. We know that that's happening. So when we talk about economic development, I want to make sure that there's a voice on Hayward City Council that's very strong in the sense that 21st century businesses have changed. It's no more working more stores. We're talking about e-commerce. We're talking about, you know, none of my friends buy anything by going to the mall anymore unless they really want to look at it. Otherwise, it's always online, and if it doesn't fit, mail it back, right? That's what we're talking about. The businesses in Hayward are slowly changing as well. Now, what we need is, we have a broadband infrastructure that was just rented at the company to work on that for the state of Hayward. Now, that is one step, but that just happened in the last couple of months. Should have happened about 10 years ago, right? This is why Hayward has been stagnant compared to our neighboring cities. When we talk about incubator programs, as I referenced, we have three colleges in the area and a diverse talent pool. We should be teaming up with these colleges and working to make sure that there's something here on the flatlands of Hayward where people can work together, learn from each other, and test things out, and put their business up in play with the permitting process in Hayward. Even the marijuana cannabis businesses, some of the individuals that received the permits have told me it's still a nightmare, even though they've been told that they will receive the permit. Businesses in the 21st century need to start and fail as soon as possible. The common concept in business is fail and fail quickly. So you learn from it and then be able to maneuver yourself. Hayward has not allowed that. So when we talk about economic development, I also want to talk about our very diverse workforce. We definitely need to really ensure that we team up with our colleges to provide avenues for adults. During that economic downturn, I was laid off personally. And granted, I was given my job back six months later, but in those six months, you're really questioning yourself, your value, your future, your life. You know, "How am I going to put a roof over my head?" And I was thinking about any avenue to transition careers, you know? My undergrad is in local science, so I definitely obtained my master's during that downtime, if you will. Now, there are other adults that maybe had kids too soon. Maybe came from a different country and are still trying to work to put food on their table, but also they have the time to invest in themselves. Well, we can definitely start to train them in a lot of different union jobs that do make six figures easily. And these apprenticeship programs, and we do have a couple in Hayward, but we need to strengthen that. Chauvin College, for example, has a certification program that allows you to work on a BMW engine. And we need to expand those types of certifications and job potential in Hayward. And give anybody that you can bring along and teach them something, and if they want to learn, they will learn it, especially if it means that it improves their family life. But we just need to work with people, adult people's schedules. So when I talk about regional leadership, I'm talking about, let's work with our schools. Let's think bigger in business, right? We know that the environment is changing. Let's think about the regional partnership in some of our neighboring cities. For example, we're very close to Castro Valley, and we're very close to the unincorporated areas. Now, I know Sarah has a very good relationship with Castro Valley and the folks there. The reality is that they don't actually have people that really govern them except for at the supervisor level. Now, they have what they call a municipal advisory committee, and some of them didn't even have that, we're working to make sure that they have that. But they tend to come to Hayward for their shopping and things like that. So we need to definitely take a look at how we can probably expand some of our regional pull, if you will. And you know, in regards to public safety, crime has gone up. Crime has gone up on a regional level, but specifically larceny. Now, I had my car broken into. I had nothing but my campaign literature stolen. But I had my car broken into, my father's had his car broken into, my sister's had her car broken into. That's a problem, right? We are tired of that. And that is something that we definitely need to work with our police force to ensure that we have more of an auditing of the data that's coming in. When we take a look at some of the reports that are coming in, and the calls that are coming in to the police department, we hear, and I personally heard this from residents that said, "They heard no response." That is a big problem. There was a woman who, her HOA president came to a city council meeting and made public comments. And he said that she was walking in her home with grocery bags, and some man tried to get into her home as well, and she closed the door, called the cops. and there was no response for forty minutes. And she called again because the man showed again, police never showed. And just imagine if that was any one of us, and God forbid that man was able to come into her home, that whether it's rape, a murder, or just burglary, and she'd be harmed in that particular situation. Now, that is why your HOA president came to the city council meeting. Now, we have just appointed our police chief. I've spoken to him about setting up a chief advisory panel where we actually have members of the community, a very diverse community, come and speak to them directly regularly. So he hears what's happening. Then we audit the calls that are coming into the call centers and see how many calls and what type of calls are happening and audit it regularly to see are we making improvements based on the data. There's no need for extra expense, there's no need to pay more. This is just making our current system better. Those are some of the things that I really, really want to push. When we talk about affordable housing, because housing is my number-one issue, I'm going to be honest about that. Our new developments are supposed to have affordable housing at seven to ten percent, depending on the type of complex that's being built. Now, even San Francisco moved it to twenty percent in the past year or so. The reason for that is, you know, we can tackle it from when it's built. Now, I know DITCIS has some concepts that are good regarding about building actually more affordable to begin with. And that is true, you know, in California, why is real estate so high, right? There are some issues that are happening because the state laws mandate some of the extra costs, if you will. But we can also just be able to say we're going to increase our affordable housing percentage from seven percent or ten percent to maybe fifteen percent, right? These are small moves we can do. We could also just ensure that we focus on where we're going to develop, how much we're going to develop, and be very, as I said, intentional with our development. Now, I have personally been endorsed by many different leaders that are on this as well as other places. But my main background is that I'm very comfortable working with all people at all levels to ensure that all voices are heard and we move forward together. That is why I'm running, and I feel that I made a significant impact on Hayward City Council. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question. Sarah, you had mentioned about the goals for Hayward. Could you talk a little bit about what that is for the next five years?
So, generally, goals that I'd like to see, just tell me a little more about your questions.
You were speaking about planning, and then there was a five-year plan basically. So I'm sorry to ask that, I don't exactly what that is.
Right, so that's a five-year plan to close the budget gap right now. We have a structural budget deficit, refined year to year, but the measures that we use to do that year to year aren't sustainable for the long run. College deficit? So, in the out-years, so let me start with where it was four years ago. It was looking like right about now, 2019, 2020, we were going to run out of reserves. So we haven't done that. We've actually, our reserves have been right on target. They haven't run a lot, but they also have a trough. And the horizon for that reserve, if we don't continue to change things, has gotten further out. So we made progress over the last four years. But what we said to the city manager when she came on board a couple of years ago is enough of this one-year balancing stuff. We need a plan for the next five years to actually close that deficit for the long term. So it's a couple of different factors. One is that we've worked with our employee groups to figure out how do we attract and retain the talent that we need to make sure our roads are safe, our sewers are clean, that our fires are put out, you know, all of the stuff that we pay for as taxpayers to have this city run. How do we do that at a price that taxpayers can afford? And our employee groups have been great in working with us and brainstorming even newer ways. So we've now this year renegotiated all of our contracts, and collectively, it's about a million dollars a year per year for the next five years. And then even more in the out-years. Then it also looks at how are we paying down on our long-term deficit? Unfortunately, long before I got on council, the state of California made rules that increased our pension and health benefit liabilities. Decisions got made, I can't change the past. But what I can do is make sure we don't repeat those mistakes and then we pay down that deficit. We not only don't increase it, but we also pay it down so that it's not this bigger bill down the road. When I got onto council, this was a key issue for me, for the city. And so I knew that the city could not solve it by itself. So I went to the League of California Cities, which are a professional society, and asked, "Is anybody working on that?" Sure enough, there's a, at the time, it was Employee Relations and State Governance Transparency and Labor Relations, which is a statewide policy committee. And I said, "Okay, signing up for that, please." They appointed me, and within a year I was vice chair, and about six months after that, I was chair, and I've chaired it for the last couple of years. And so when I talk about testifying to Sacramento, I was out help at the pension board meetings saying, "Look, we have got to do this together in a productive way." Brought in our labor groups to do that. And when I started doing that, I was the only elected in the room who was willing to have these conversations. The last time I was there, there were fifty of us, and, you know, continued to grow. And there was one other piece to the balancing. And then the last piece is, as we start to get more stable, which is where we are now, we're really doing much better, that we don't go backwards, that we be really clear about how do we spend our money, ask tough questions. Before I got on council, I would hear people say, "Oh, well, you know, that project's going to be much more money because the price of concrete went up." So I'm pretty sure concrete is still made of the same stuff it was three years ago. I realize there's a supply and demand problem, but having people on council who will say, "Hold up. We're not doing it that way anymore." I'll give you one last story on that, and I'll give the floor, which is, it was the practice that in June they would pass a balanced budget. And then in midterm, they would come back and say, "You know what? We really need this other position and need to do these other things." And what I said was, you know, maybe it's the case that we need that extra position, but I'm not making that decision out of our normal budget process where we can actually balance out. If we're going to increase here, we've got to take it away somewhere else. And so my first, I got elected in June, so my first mid-year budget cycle was the first time I saw that. It was the sole no vote against that practice. That was the last year we did it that way.
Thank you.
I don't know if, I don't know if the caller wanted to answer that.
You have a question. I do have a question related to that.
Yes, I have a question.
Before you ask, can we pass it around for a little bit and then ask your question?
Yeah.
Okay. So I worked for ten years as an economic development specialist for a city, and I brought in businesses, my other businesses that were already there, expand. What I see in Hayward is that the economic development department is not held in high regard, even though we have one of the best economic development departments in the Bay Area. Recently, our director of economic development moved to Oakland, so we now have nobody in the economic development department. Well, we have one person, and she's been there for two months. Now, that's something that I don't want anybody to ever have to experience, that when you come on board and you're still trying to figure out, "Where's the front door? Where's the back door?", that they say, "Oh, by the way, you're the only one in this department." Look, if you have a business that is selling something, you're making something in an industry, you're making something, would you cut your sales department if things got tough? That would be the last thing that you would do. In fact, you might even say, "We need three more salespeople to actually go out there and sell these things so we can actually get off the ground and get moving." Well, the economic development department is our sales force for the city. When I was working in that department, not here in Hayward, in another city, there were six of us in a city, six professionals, in a city that was half the size, actually a third of the size of Hayward. Here, we had three people, and there were supposed to be four, but they wouldn't fund, they wouldn't seek the fourth person. They need six people in there, and now we need a new director. But what I'm not seeing, and it's, I guess, from our city manager, but I haven't heard it from the council, is any sense of urgency to get the economic development department up and running and moving as quick as possible. The process, they were replacing two people, they took six months to put it on the calendar to actually post the jobs. This is something that we can't tolerate, that has to happen, a lot has to happen. This is not rocket science. These positions are existing, and all they need to do is post it. But they're not being posted with any urgency, and they're not developing one of the most important departments that we have. We talk about the price of building a company. Someone wants to come into Hayward and build a business, and industrial business, and they want to erect a building to do that. All right, there's two major factors involved in erecting a building. The cost of land and the time it takes to run it through the city. We've been running projects through the city very fast, a year to three years. That's why the price of concrete changes so much, because four plus a year ago, it isn't today. But that's what people have come, developers, saying that this is the way it's supposed to be. This is not the way it's supposed to be, this is the way it is. But it's the way it is because government doesn't change it. Now, we're not terribly efficient in government, and American government, we actually don't want our government to be efficient because that means that it might be more dictatorial. On the other hand, on the local level, we need our government to be at least functional, if not efficient. And functional means that projects get off the ground much quicker, much sooner, much more efficiently so that they can get up, as you say, you know, start a business and fail, whatever you need to do. But that's what keeps things going. If you put sixty million dollars into a business, and that's what you budgeted for, and you have to wait three years, and you find out that the sixty million dollars is not enough, that it's now going to cost you a hundred million dollars, that's the end, by Hayward, by the Bay Area, we'll go into the Central Valley and build it on somebody's farm. So we have to change that, we have to make that more efficient. Economic development department is the first place we go. The second place we go is the planning department, where people have projects stacked up on their desk, and they'll get to it just as quickly as they can, probably eight to twelve months from now, come back when we're ready. We need more people in the planning department. When you staff up those two departments, you actually see the city do better because when you have businesses and you have industry coming in and functioning, that increases your tax rate, that increases your revenues for the city. An industrial business pays eleven dollars for each dollar of service they get. A household, a house in Hayward, pays one dollar for a dollar twenty-five. Sometimes it's a little bit lower, sometimes it's a dollar even. But it's a break-even at best for the services and the taxes they pay. Our taxes are too high, I agree, but that's what we're getting because that's the price of things. So we depend on the industrial business and the commercial business, it's five for one, the commercial and retail businesses. We depend on them to add to our coffers to be able to afford the goods and services that we need and the things that are essential, like police and fire in our neighborhoods. That's where we're deficient, and that's someplace that we have to, we have to have urgency on that. And when things get tight and we need to not finance something or not fund something, those are the last two departments that you don't want to fund, that you don't want to sit on, that you don't want to get moving. That you, whatever it takes, you get those people up and running, and that's not happening here.
To add, sorry, I just want to fill this one question up. The reality is that Hayward financially, and I'm going to be honest with you, one of the other reasons why I'm running is because they have consistently said about financial responsibility. We have incumbents that have said that, right? The city of Hayward, and let's just think about this, right? We know that we've been on an upward trend in the economy for the past couple of years now, right? Doesn't matter what industry you're in, that's the way we've been trending. In this fiscal year nineteen, we are going to take roughly an estimated five-point-eight million dollars from our reserves. And it's scheduled, doesn't mean it's going to happen or not, but it's scheduled. And we've done this every single year for the most part. Now, my biggest concern is that our city manager, just in the last couple of months, actually projected that we would complete our reserves if we continue this path. Now, the reason why our budget is balanced is because we take from our reserves, right? Now, we know that this habit needs to stop. We know that if we're not, as DITCIS mentioned, increasing revenue in our city through other means, we're going to have problems. And my biggest concern is that we hear constantly the news that we're going to have another economic downturn. We don't know when, but we know it's on the rise, which is the way our economy works. Now, with this said, we currently only have fourteen percent in our reserves, when it's required to be about at twenty percent. Now, with that said, I'm just wondering, what are we going to do during another economic downturn if we don't have all our other areas solidified? Now, with our, the reason why I say that we need to be a little bit more, take a look at our data and audit is that larger organizations, and I've been responsible for this myself, the international standard of organization, ISO certified and things like that, they tend to audit themselves before an outsider audits them. And every single month, an organization will take a look at themselves, see how much they're wasting, see how much energy they're using, see how much people are supplying, they're using the most random things that, you know, when I first got into that, I was like, "Wow." And every single month, knowing the numbers, you do one or two more tasks to reduce that number. Now, the city of Hayward, for example, we granted three cannabis permits. And as of 2016-ish, you know, when we voted that to be the law of the land, we could have moved a lot faster. We could have given the permits already. So for example, that woman who received one of the permits and her calling me and saying, "Still a nightmare, I can't even get up and going yet." That, we're hurting ourselves by not allowing for those businesses to get up. We absorb their taxes, right? We generate revenue. When we have some of the other businesses that we've failed to really work with, our economic development team has been working, but if you take a look at our business, we have the Asian Business Alliance, we have the Chamber of Commerce, we have another downtown group. None of these groups are working with each other. Now, it's the culture that has been around in business in Hayward. People don't feel comfortable asking for help. Now, the reason why I've mentioned an incubator program before is because many, many statistically proven that entrepreneurs tend to be foreign-born Americans, right? Now, at higher levels. And with that said, is that many people, including my own family that are small business owners, hesitate to open their business because of all the paperwork. We need to streamline this where if you want a permit, you get that permit that day within three clicks. There shouldn't be any extra work to get a permit. The other day, I was walking to past weekend, and a woman asked me about, "What do you think about development?" And I said, "I'm completely fine with intentional, smart, organized development." And she said, "I'm very upset because I've been in the process." I'm a developer, her first development project on her own, too, and she's developing in the hills, and her project has been at a standstill for about two and a half years. And Hayward, just recently, for the affordable housing in roof fees, so let's say a developer doesn't want to build and affordable housing percentage that's required, they just pay a one-time annual fee, okay? Now, that annual fee went from four dollars to eighteen dollars, right? And where, that's a good number, I'm happy with the eighteen dollars a square foot. That happened in the last roughly three and a half months or so. That should have happened a couple of years ago, okay? Every single ordinance that we have, every single dollar bill that we're assigning to different fees and things like that need to be assessed every single year. For a permit to go from four dollars to eighteen dollars a square foot, there should have, for the businesses, it should have been a stepping stone each, each two years or so, right? That's not fair for businesses. Now, we also see this gigantic leap, so she's telling me, "That's going to cost me one-point-four million dollars." And my project was not budgeted for this amount of money. And so we chatted a little bit about back and forth, and I was, in my opinion, if you're making one-point-four million dollars for just one particular fee, I'm sure you're happy with the rest of it. So, you know, I joked with her, and she, we explained to her that that four dollars to eighteen dollars that that four dollars to eighteen dollars, eighteen dollars puts us in competition with other cities, right? We're on an even playing field. Now, why is Hayward constantly playing catch-up with every city next to us? San Leandro has surpassed us in many different ways, right? Including economic development. And roughly five years ago, they started an incubator program that the city sponsored, okay? You had four more business groups. Now, when I talk about diversity and the permitting process and things like that, the city is responsible in the sense of making business easier for people. So if people are afraid of paperwork, the paperwork needs to simplify. If people are afraid of time, the time needs to be expedited. These are the things that I want the city of Hayward to really tackle. They haven't. They're making an attempt, and to be quite frank with you, with no term limits for the city of Hayward. I met a man that served for twenty-four years on city council of Hayward. You know, the biggest question I asked him was, why? Why would you serve city council for twenty-four years? Wouldn't you get bored, right? Now, the concept really is that need fresh ideas, people that really think outside of the box and a change. Because we know our community changes, but city council needs to reflect that. City council has been a stone in the water. It has not moved. And that is why I personally am asking for everyone to have an open mind for new voices on city council.
I'll second that. Just one thing, in economic development, you said something, oh, in Lufi. I was part of the advocates for raising the Lufi, but not for the reasons that were expressed here right now. We had developers come into the economic development committee where I sat and they would tell us about their housing projects and what they're going to do with it. And we said, well, we'd like you to have affordable housing included as a segment of this project. And their answer was, eh, that doesn't pencil out. What are your Lufis? And we told them, in Lufis, and said, I'll write you a check right now. They were that low. And we're looking at it going like, that's half a million dollars. It's a forty million dollar project, you know? If this will get it going, then just get out of the way and we pay it. And we're going, what about the people that need housing? They said, that's not our problem. And we go, that's our problem? So why would we want you to build a house for in Hayward if it's not going to include people from Hayward? And what we got on Mission Boulevard, fifteen hundred new homes being built there at seven hundred thousand dollars a pop. Nobody in Hayward is going to buy those homes. That's all people from outside Hayward that are going to fill those houses. And then the mayor and a city council member were telling the Fairway Park people that they were proudly announcing that fifteen hundred houses were going to be built on Mission Boulevard. And they were smiling. And what I was hearing from the people there, here there too, was this smile like, are you kidding me? Fifteen hundred houses means three thousand cars minimum are going to be on the streets every day. Because there was no, there was no provision to get anybody into those cars away. And they said, well, don't worry about it because BARTs do. We have South Hayward BART. And I looked at South Hayward BART and said, yeah, with a ten-acre parking lot. And that's really encouraging people to not bring their cars. That's encouraging people to bring their cars. And people were bringing their cars one block, two blocks to get a gallon of milk. It's like you get it there. Or what they were complaining about in Fairway Park was taking forty-five minutes to get to downtown. What we want to do is not build houses anyplace and every place we can just because you can build housing. It's how we build housing, what's included with that housing, where that housing is, so that it's part of something. It is a component, it is not standalone. The problem in California is called sprawl. And sprawl, by definition, is housing without anything supporting it, without any access to the goods and services. And all you have is a house surrounded by asphalt and concrete. You have alienation, you have stability, and you have anger. And those are the three premises for sprawl. And that's what we need to break. The other thing that sprawl does is that it actually supports and encourages racism. So why would we want to encourage that kind of development? We don't need housing just to have housing. We're in dire need of housing, so we need to include it. We need to include it in our concepts of nodes, of centers, of villages, just like we have the downtown, which needs housing on top of it, so that people actually live here, not to sit here and go there, but to live there and go downstairs to get whatever they need. We need those nodes out in our community too. And to organize that is what the city council has to lead. So it's lead, follow, or get out of the way. I apologize.
I have to leave, I have my lumps already. Thank you so much for coming. I just wanted a quick thing to add. I'm also very concerned about two things in Hayward. First is business safety. There are tons of warehouses in space and industrial corporations can come and basically use this warehouse and space, but they're concerned about safety. And many companies actually moved out to different areas because those warehouses were broken into. And the damage of that is way higher than paying a higher rate somewhere in Pleasant Hill. And second thing is, business safety needs to be better just because we need more money in Hayward. And when it comes to schools, and she was completely right, as a person who is a young family, with lots of young families here also living, people are just transitioning. They don't stay here. Once their kids are up to five-year-old, they move to better areas with better schools. No one is actually considering staying here because the schools are not good enough. And we were talking about middle-income families who actually came here, who really like the area and who would love to stay if it would be a little bit better, a little bit higher rating and a little bit more diversified community in schools. And when it comes to that, it's really bad seeing this picture because people actually bring way more value when they leave here as opposed to coming here and then moving out. And that's the biggest concerns I have.
Yes, Betty, we were all itching to respond, but we promised this justice is waiting. So I'm betting that there's contact info for all of us on the flyer. So if you want to have a dialogue about those, reach out to us.
I do want to just say that I have talked to every candidate running for school board and I've said that I would work with you because as I mentioned, that school board and city council have historically never worked well with each other, right? We definitely need to do more. And in regards to the infrastructure of businesses, I hundred percent agree. Especially with crime rates rising, it's easier just to break into a business and steal higher value items. One of the other things that businesses have a problem with is that they can't do too much maneuvering in their actual complex. Because a lot of these buildings are so old that they have asbestos. And if you break down a wall, asbestos gets in the air. These are things that the city council has not historically tackled as to how are we going to help you change the infrastructure from these nineteen fifty's buildings that, you know, people are holding on to and it's been inherited property for year after year after year. We do need to hold some of these folks more accountable for providing and improving those infrastructures. So I agree with you and I have to back. Thank you so much.
Now, there's asbestos, please vote. Because the biggest problem with asbestos, there's a federal one, there's a state's program, there's even a local program to take care of asbestos. We don't do it because the federal government is now cutting funds to deal with that. So we need to vote and change the Congress to keep that in.
There's two suggestions. One suggestion is that in the city or library, generation of high-end person, there should be some, give the priority of five percent or something, the local people who stay in the neighborhood. Because in the Alameda County, San Francisco City, and all some other cities, they have the provision like that. The people who live in their city or something, they are just giving the priority for, giving the opportunity. So.
That's good.
Yeah, so that's where the local people, especially single women, who is just struggling and sits staying in the neighborhood or some of the single men or like that, that's where they can get the job, not like they have to drive or all of the results. And second point is that she mentioned that when the city or something, they are doing the affordable housing and that also first time buyer, they should give some consideration to get the housing. Because in the Fremont City, they are giving the priority. The person who lives in the Hayward, in the tenant, they have to just bring the rental agreement and so they can just go and get the housing there to Fremont. So this is the first.
And who is working in Hayward, they also get priority, yeah.
But that's the second priority, but who lives in the neighborhood gets the first priority.
I think it correspond where we are right now, but I've been talking a lot. So first, I'll let somebody else start first.
Yeah, you bring up very good points. Giving priority to Hayward residents is exactly what I want to have done. There's the whole idea of gentrification, of being outbid by people from outside because they can't do that. Why does that happen? Because a developer is out, the purpose of development is to make money. It's not to serve the public, it's to make money. That's their obligation and that's what they want to do. How do you change that? Well, under the redevelopment system, we actually did change that. We recognized that that was not helping the city, so we developed, we designed redevelopment to actually have the city say, this is what we as a community need. How much would a developer bid on making this for us? And it will pay you to do what we want, not what you want, what we want, what we need. And with that went away, it has not been replaced by anything. Now, there's a lot of talking, it's a bit about what the next redevelopment system will look like and how it will be rolled out. But we need to do that in Hayward. We need to become our own developers. How do you do that? Well, you have to have money. And so what I propose is three corporations. A Hayward Community Land Trust, a Hayward Community Investment Fund, and a Hayward Community Developer. So with those three, we can actually control our own destiny by making our decisions. And when somebody comes, which I heard on this committee many, many times, we said, you need mixed development, you need this, you need that, according to our special plan that we wrote and spent all the years designing and running. And I heard the council members fold every single time and the developer says, eh, that doesn't pencil out. I don't want to do that. And I said, oh, oh well. I go, what do you mean, oh well? What do you mean, oh well? This is Hayward. And you're saying that because they don't want to do it, that they don't have to do it? And suddenly, one of the council members said, oh, yeah, but we have to put the trail in there on Mission Boulevard because that's part of the plan. And they said, well, go around our property, not through it. And I said, no, it has to go through the property. That's the whole idea, that you build the most size of the trail and the back will be to the street instead. A different way of thinking. They don't want to think differently, so we have to think differently. We have to be in control of our own destiny. And we need something like these three corporations, which are Hayward-owned. And to be part of these corporations, you be a resident of Hayward. And that's how you do it. Now, how do you get more money for that? We need to put, raising the income so the residents of Hayward has one of our priorities. It can no longer be something where we do all the amenities, which are, but when we come down to who's going to pay for it, we say, and we just charge the people of Hayward, the residents of Hayward, to do it. And we'll just put another bill on the businesses and the industrial area and that's how we'll get it done. And then everybody's saying like, look, everything keeps going up but my income. And as your income goes up, we need to address that. Nobody is looking at that. Nobody's saying anything about that. Certainly, nobody is doing anything about that. It's not in our horizon, it's not in any of the departments there. When they asked me to be on the Economic Development Committee, I said, that's where I want the focus of the committee to do it. And the director told me, gee, that's not what we do. And I said, I didn't ask you what we did. I'm telling you what we need. So what we need to do is add that to our list of what we do. And he said, well, you didn't do that all the time? Well, we didn't do lighting when the city was founded, we didn't do streets when the city was founded, we didn't have a fire department, it was a volunteer fire department, and we didn't have a police department. All those things we now have in Hayward and none of us think that they should go away. Why would they go away? Well, we didn't have them before and we have them now. But look, in the economy, income is a vital part of our livelihood. We need to put that as part of our government services too. Figuring out how to help people get higher income. I see your hand pointing up.
I'm sorry. So I was going to say, I mean, I've heard mostly from you two that it's hard to get other people on the council to change what they're doing. How would you get people to change? I mean, you all have good ideas, you're all doing things. But how do you get everyone else to go on? Just so that it gets done? How do you convince them?
If the council has seven members, you need four members, four votes to have a majority on any project. What you'll notice if you look at the minutes is that most of the projects get seven votes. They get seven votes because most of this is hashed out in the committees before they actually make it to the council, where everybody puts their influence in, everybody debates and argues in the committees. In the committees, most of the committees are open to people. We can actually go to them and you can see them fight. You can't add anything to it because you can just sit there and you can't make comment. That's kind of not good. But that's how it's done right now, as far as I can tell. We need to change that a little bit. But I'm not going to say we don't need four people. What we need is four people. I think that with the three of us, we have at least two of those people, you know?
Two of us, that's fine.
So then, what you need is two more, two more people. The next election will be four people running. If you're not happy with the way things are going, then there's, you don't say, change them, you say, get somebody else to change them. Get somebody with a different idea, that you call it fresh ideas.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be fresh ideas. A village town that I'm proposing has been around for thirty-five hundred years and it's effective for people around the world. India has some of the best examples of that. The Middle East has some, I'm sorry, the Middle East has some of the best examples of that. Jericho is the oldest city in the world. I saw how actually they built their city, the ancient city, and how the new city is modeled on that. And it's effective because it is focused around centers or places and things like that and that the industry was for the people of that town. And we need to focus on that kind of thing now.
To be completely frank, I personally think that one of the ways that we can influence people to make different decisions is actually to provide ideas. I'll be honest with you, I personally don't think that the current city council really has a lot of ideas. You know, don't want to take too hard jobs, but the reality is that the city of Hayward has had same members on council for many years. Not only that, but almost every single city council member has served on the planning commission. They are responsible for the way that the city has been. One incumbent that's running for reelection has served eight years on council and eight years on planning commission. That is sixteen years of having a say in how the city is being run. That is a huge help, right? This is the first election ever held in the country. Now, for me personally, I think that I've sat personally with every single city council member currently seated and I've chatted with them about business, about housing, and about moving forward. Every single one of them said that if you were to be elected, we would gladly work on these particular projects. Somebody even said that this would be your expertise, this is what I consider my expertise. And everyone comes from different backgrounds. People have different educational levels, different, you know, viewpoints, things like that. But having that open discussion, this is what I want to see. So I can clearly lay it out to you. My number one priority is affordable housing, my second priority is economic development. You can't have one without the other. And, you know, I've clearly, vocally have stated this to anybody that's going to listen. Now, I know that some city council members actually have other priorities. And we can always feedback on these things as, you know, I want to do this and if you can help me move this, I'll help you with, you know, making it more green or, you know, pushing some other type of issue. Now, the situation is that in Hayward in particular, somebody told me, somebody after another forum we had came up to me and said, well, we really want somebody from Hayward on Hayward City Council. Meaning that because I've lived here for roughly a decade, I'm not Hayward enough. That's a sad reality that some people in Hayward have, you know, they live in a bubble. They don't work outside.
I apologize for what you told you. That's really.
And sadly, this is some of the people's beliefs and this is that insider politics that, you know, is. And, and sadly, this is some of the people's beliefs, and this is that insider politics that, you know, is, is talked about, but nobody really understands. And, um, seven to zero on many, 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 many votes. It's because technically that they really don't have an idea because that's what they want to do. The city staff has been actually pushing a lot more agenda. So this city is known on a regional level as a city staff strong city. Meaning that city council doesn't tell city staff what to do, it's the other way around. Almost in every city council meeting, you'll see staff make stronger suggestions and actually argue with city council members as to, no, 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 that's not how we do it, that's not good we're gonna do it, no, that's not a good idea. Right? I'm sure if you guys all see, every single, every single city council meeting, you see this. Um, now, one of the other ways that we can definitely transition is this, um, is this is the first ever election that's in November, so a different electorate comes out. You know, our mayor is, our mayor with less than five thousand votes in a city of a hundred sixty thousand less people. Now, that's not to say that five thousand people voted, but less than five thousand people voted for our insurance mayor, right? So when we have our elections in June, it changes things as well, right? And you have more older conservative, um,
Fewer.
You know, fewer people voting. Now, when we move into November, it's a more diverse pool. And to be honest with you, by me saying, you know, I really afford housing at all income levels, doesn't matter if you want that six bedroom house on the hill, or, or if you want just a two bedroom apartment to rent. Everyone should have a house, or a roof over their head, if you will. Um, now, if, for example, even if I made any traction in, uh, being elected, that would tell the rest of the city council, people want something different. People care about these values. People, you know, definitely care about some of the issues that I've been talking about. That's how things start to change in that political world, right? The rest of the Bay Area is far progressive than us, right? On every single issue. I can't say that we are a jambalaya leader in one particular issue, we're not. And that is something that the rest of the Bay Area, everyone we talk to say, oh, I just, I pass Hayward. You know, the max I'll do is, is get off on Wynton and go to Sappamole, if I need some new sneakers or something like that, right? It's not a destination site, which we need to change. We also need to change, you know, whatever we bring in. So a lot of people complain about, hey, um, there's nothing to do for families here. And, uh, a bowling alley is constantly talked about in Hayward. And that's true, those type of recreational things are needed in Hayward. However, also, families are changing. The, the favorite pastimes are changing. You know, we need to kind of think about, like, what are we gonna do in the next ten, fifteen years? A bowling alley is a significant amount of space. How often is it used? You know, things like that, you know, and people are saying, yeah, we're gonna open up a bowling alley. But the reality is, who's really gonna fund that bowling alley for, you know, ten, twenty years down the line? Um, we definitely need to take a look at how we utilize each space. So as Carla and I were talking about it, um, he mentioned, uh, that, you know, he's been trying to push, uh, he has a techie program, if you will, in, in Hayward. And he has been advocating for a city council member to support his ideas and, uh, definitely move in that direction. Now, a lot of the development happening in Hayward, um, a lot of the city council members say that it's geared towards millennials. I'm a millennial. Half of the projects that they say I, I would never cover even want, right? So for example, on downtown, there's something called the Green Shutter Building. The Green Shutter Building, they have approved with zero parking assigned to it, okay?
And I, and they kicked out our intended bookstore.
Yeah. And the thing about the Green Shutter Building is that I agree with the difference in such that we need to be more green and, and utilize different, uh, uh, modes of transportation, if you will. But at the end of the day is that even though I drive to Hayward and I commute to San Jose, I need my car. BART has extended itself to San Jose, but not where I need it to go, right? We still, the infrastructure's not there yet. Everything that's being talked about is like a ten year, fifteen year, twenty year in, in California, maybe even a hundred year plan because of the way this system is. Um, so when somebody assigns, approves of a project with zero parking assigned to it, when we know that there's already a parking issue in downtown, when we know that businesses are, are struggling, when we know that the workers post them part, because even if they take BART to some other, you know, city to do work, they're gonna have a weekend car, they're gonna take their kids to school, how are they gonna do that, right? Those are some of the things that I just blatantly want to say in this beautiful city council that we have that, that's not gonna work, right? Not right now, how are we gonna move forward in some other capacity? Now, there are ideals that we can kind of strive towards, but we also need to be very realistic in our approach. Not waste money, not waste time, and not damage our infrastructure already, considering how it is, right? We know that people are gonna need parking and traffic and stuff like that. So I personally think that's just being very vocal, working with different community members, making sure that community members have a voice on city council and actually do attend and approach these meetings and, um, you know, wanna see what the input is. And also telling city staff, majority of people don't even know that, that no, 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 we know what's right for our city. You know, this might work in a different city, but we know what's right for our city. So one of the challenges in offering the opportunity for other people to speak is then, by the time I do speak, I have a lot to say. But I'll do my best to, to keep it tight. Uh, so I'll answer the question that's on the floor first, that was your question, about, um, how do you help people move, how do you move people? So when I, um, the seven years prior to getting onto the council, I had worked, um, to address homelessness in and around Hayward. And I did that by working side by side with folks on the street. I went to residents, I went to county, I had worked in nonprofit, I, I either worked or volunteered at twenty-five different nonprofits in my twenty-five years. Not, you know, most, most of them simultaneously. Um, anyway, so I was, uh, I, I felt like I had done the research, I'm a data-driven kind of person. And so I dug into the numbers, and then I get elected in twenty-fourteen, and I'm like, okay! I got the answer, let's go! And I got nominated for about two years. When I first started dating my husband, he would say to me, so, hon, you had the first part of that conversation in your head. Do you want to catch me up? You know, I knew this stuff, I had this framework. But it wasn't until the light went on and I said, haha, the other folks on the council had a completely different frame of reference that they were looking at. And so what I learned is I had to step back and actually walk over there and look at that frame of references. That's how you're saying this? Okay, when we walk alongside with you. And it wasn't that I thought I had the perfect answer for anything, I'm certain I'm not unleashed to a perfect white image stretch of imagination. But what I had was a data-driven approach, and once I got their data, that was the missing piece. Then together over the last couple of years, we've made tremendous progress. And part of that was also now having a council that has a backbone, which more so than it didn't have. Our city manager, Hesu Sarmas, drove this ship. Uh, Fred Danham, not quite as much. Kelly works for us, our current city manager. Um, so we, and I say all that to say, it's a culture shift. It takes some time to realize, first of all, it takes some time to realize, if I say this, people will listen and start to come to a conclusion about it. You know, I started talking about, um, housing affordability and accessibility when I was on the planning mission. And it really pretty much fell flat. By the time I got to council, we were starting to have units that were built with, um, first floor bedrooms. Which is nice, but if the kitchen's on the second floor, then that's really, it's kind of a step shot, it's not appropriate. Um, now, not only do we have units where there's a, a bedroom on the same floor with a kitchen and living room, the home, the heart of the houses, but now we even have units where the, um, there's an, uh, accessory building unit built within the complex, where we thought about parking, um, by design. So this affordability by design that I've been talking about for years now, we're starting to see it happen. That to me is a exciting thing. Um, and that complex that I just mentioned, that has, we have a couple of those complexes that we've heard. The latest one is all black, so it's also much greener. I know there's hands, so I'm not letting go of the top. Do you want to push them back?
Yeah, my question is a bit complicated. Uh, what's one thing that each of you are going to do to ensure that everyone in this room stays safe?
So, yeah, sure. Um, so safety has a very, a big topic at a certain degree. Um, the reality is that I personally live in a part of Hayward where Hayward police, uh, I went to another HOA meeting, and there's a couple of police officers there. And, um, they all asked, what, where do you live, right? And we went around the room, and everyone said, I live this street or that street, it was a very large HOA, if you will. And, um, I stated, well, I actually don't live here, I was invited here, and I live, uh, more towards Sisfarin, if you will. And, um, where that young man was, uh, killed roughly this past month, um, in front of the Vagabond Inn motel. I live here closer. Now, um, the police officer said, you live in the good part of Hayward. Now, I'm originally from Fremont. Uh, we moved out here because we were priced out, you know, if not a downturn, you know, family had, um, small business tank and things like that. Um, now, at this point in time, I was a little offended by the fact that a police officer representing Hayward would say that to anyone, right? And I'd also like to say, it's your job, buddy, to make sure that that part's safe, right? Now, that, because our officer and I have actually engaged, uh, a couple of times afterwards, and, and we have a very friendly relationship. Um, and I always bring it up to him, I said, you know, why the hell would you say that, right? So, the situation is that Hayward's crime rate has gone up and break-ins and have become more bold. Homes have been broken into while people are actually in their home. Now, we know that we're, uh, mentally ill individuals too. If they're self-medicating, if they're homeless, if things like that, they tend to have, um, certain trips where they go into somebody's home assuming that it's their own home even. There are some burglars that have a beer wander while they leave, right? And we've seen all of this on the news. Now, uh, my own personal, uh, home, my father was sitting on the couch, and a woman walks in and walks straight through past him, and my dad's like, ooh, what are you doing? And she goes, this is my home. And, uh, my dad's like, you know, I've lived here for a number of years. And, and, mind you, he's an elderly man and he's kind of sick, right? So he was uncomfortable too with just, you know, crazy woman coming in. And, uh, she finally left, and, um, you know, we double-checked, we switched our locks to make it like that extra thick bar, um, if you will, because the door's always locked, but somehow she managed to get in, or my dad didn't hear because the TV was loud or something. Now, the situation is that every neighborhood is different. Every neighborhood has a propensity of different types of crimes. So when I talk about data, we want to know what types of crimes happen here. And the thing that I hear amongst all of Hayward is that residents feel that the police aren't responding or doing something quick enough. And I've actually heard that left and right. Now, I've had my car broken into more than enough times to know that, the first couple of times that I called, the second, the third time I would call the police. And we're getting more of that, which affects the data as well, right? And we know that even when people get their car broken into two, three times, or their home broken into, they're like, you know what, screw the police, I'm just gonna take care of it, or I'm gonna go through my insurance or something. And the sad part is that we get penalized because of those types of crimes, right? Our insurance rates go up, you know, it's D industry living in, not the greatest neighborhood. My car insurance went through the roof when I moved to Hayward, right? Uh, these are all things that affect us, and why are we held liable for crimes that we don't commit and things that don't happen because we want it to happen, right? Uh, the situation is that I want to ensure that data is the biggest part of the police force. Now, a lot of people, and, and I'm, I'm very pro police environment, but more than fifty percent of the city's budget, more than fifty percent of the city's budget goes to just fire and police, okay? Now, our neighboring cities are all below fifty percent. Okay, so why are two departments absorbing this much? Are, we've had scandals in the police department. We've had scandals in the fire department. Many have kept their jobs. And I won't repeat the scandals, but it's all in public record and on the news and stuff like that. This particular city council has overseen all of that. Okay? Now, we're not holding police more accountable. I want public information of how many calls did you get in or break in? How fast was your response time? We have our chief of police, um, presenting, um, information about police force about the months a year in our end of year review, if you will, for the departments. We need that to happen on a quarterly basis. We need to show that besides hiring uniformed officers, is that we're gonna hold those officers accountable for doing their job and making sure that residents feel safe. Or at least have the residents can talk to somebody and somebody's gonna swing by. So what's interesting is that when I had my car broken into and my campaign literature stolen, uh, you know, it wasn't really making too much sense, I was just more a little bit in shock. And my dad's like, you better call the police, you know, this is a very targeted crime. They didn't steal the cash, they didn't steal my bag, they didn't steal my sunglasses, nothing, just campaign literature. So I called the police, the police said, just fill in a report online. And I said, I'm so sorry, but my dad keeps telling you, you guys, somebody needs to come here. So I put a little bit of pressure and explained that, hey, I'm a candidate, and yes, I got special treatment. I know that every other time my car's been broken into, I didn't get a special treatment. I, I was like, sweetheart, you know, we have higher, you know, issues, right? Now, with that said, is that, um, you know, I really want to know who committed this particular crime, right? Especially, it's just a huge, you know, question mark to me. Um, and the situation is that I actually, you know, have met with a police officer and a detective on this particular case multiple times for a property theft. There's actually a smaller division within that police department about property crimes. And, um, and the detective was a very nice man, and the chief of police was also very kind, um, about this whole process. And, um, because they needed certain receipts for all the material that was stolen, um, and you and I both know that when you buy something, first thing we do is open the box for the rest of it, right? Once it's usable. Um, so I had a couple of products that I bought, um, months ago, a year ago, I don't even know if I have the receipt. And during campaign season, I've been so swamped that I haven't had the time to really focus on that. I was like, you know, this is happening, I already re-ordered all my stuff, let me move on, right? That they sent a police officer to my home. So they will send a police officer to my home for this particular case, but they won't send it to a woman who is, uh, getting her door banged in, where that guy who, whoever tried to approach her door came in the second time, forty-five minutes later, right? So I really want to question priorities. I really want to hold that particular department, um, in, uh, very close proximity and with high, high capabilities. We have not done that. Now, when we talk about data, we want to know what types of crimes happen. We want to know how fast we get to responding. We want to know how many officers attend. If it's a low propensity crime, then when, whenever you touch base. And residents, to be completely honest with you, you know, for me, it wasn't the fact that, uh, I would have even potentially gone through a whole report and dealing with all this other stuff, because at the end of the day, uh, my, uh, my insurance deductible is more than my broken window, if you will, right? So it's kind of like, let's just do this and move on with my life, right? Especially because we're working, we're busy, we have families, we have lives. The main thing for many people is that, is the police actually listening to us? Do they have somebody on patrol? Now, that's the biggest thing, are they responding to us? Now, in Hayward where I live, I don't really see too few police cars, to be completely honest with you. And they say that, so that part, right? Uh, downtown, you see multiple police officers regularly, right? And you have, you have them on bicycles and, and things like that. But we still have the people that sit in a coffee shop and their computer's just stolen right in front of them, right? So my main thing for Hayward Police Department, to ensure that all residents, including this neighborhood, feel that they're responsive, is to hold them accountable with presenting the facts on a quarterly basis to the city council in a public meeting. Number two, to have that chief advisory panel to make sure that the chief of police hears directly from you. You know, one of your main things was, um, to protect and serve. Well, serving in my community is also sitting with you guys, having a tea, and, you know, eating some of these extra cookies and saying, so what's, what's, what's going on, right? You guys would more than happily invite them to an HOA meeting, right? And we do have some officers going to different HOA meetings. Is it all communities though, or just the HOAs? That's another problem, right? And we know communities of color are over police. That's another issue, right? We need to really develop and rethink how we're doing policing in the city of Hayward. Um, and so I was very happy to serve as one of the community members on the panel to request, I mean, hire this new chief of police. Um, and at the same time, I think that we can do so much more. And at the same time, I think that we can do so much more. So, I really respect our brothers and sisters in blue, but I also want to make sure that they serve the people because that attack part and serve part go hand in hand in my opinion with the police.
Gee, what do I say? My family's been here for 125 years. When I grew up, I played with, you know, Temple and Didda Cruz? Well, I played with the Cruzes because they were around a corner from me. But I didn't call him, you know, the minister, because he wasn't a minister, he was the son, he was a police officer, a Hayward police officer. We had police officers come to our house all the time, not because we were in trouble, but because they went to school with my father. Back at the Hayward Police Department and the Fire Department, most of them lived in Conville, Firemanville, and not in our communities anymore. They say it's for the wrong sake and I said, "Well, you know, then you gotta change your attitude." All right, my mother was in a hit and run accident. We, they, she called and some people around her called to get the police there. It was a battle, as you outlined. But the officer finally came and he said, "Well, lady, that's what's insurance is for." And he got, he was gonna leave. And she said, "What about a report?" He said, "You fill out a report online," said a 90-year-old woman. "You fill out a report online." She didn't even know what a line means. She told me to do it, so I did it. But that's, that's the thing that really irked me. Well, there's an officer, there's a lieutenant in charge of North Hayward and there's a lieutenant in charge of South Hayward. That's how Hayward's divided into two districts. I talked to both of them. Actually, I talked to South Hayward first because that's the one I met first. I talked to both of them. And one of the cops, the bicycle cops up here in Hayward, I was telling him about it and he goes, "You're the ones." What do you mean, "not the ones"? It was very uncomfortable at roll call because they actually pulled him out and they said, "You will not tell anyone, let alone a 90-year-old woman, you will not tell anyone, 'Well, lady, that's what insurance is for.'"
Oh, my God.
We have an attitude problem in, with some of our services. You've told me this before. I called the transportation director and he says, "I'm not gonna talk to you." I says, "What do you mean, you're not gonna talk to me?" How I talked to council members and the city manager. I said, "Kelly told me to call you." He goes, "Well, I'm not gonna talk to anyone." And he had, "This is a man that needs to look for another job." He doesn't need to be working in Hayward. He doesn't live here, so why should he work here? Find someplace else where you can actually tell people that. Because if you go into private business, unemployment office is gonna be your main goal. All right, now, with the police department in Hayward, they are data-driven. That's what, if you could talk to the chief, if you talk to the two lieutenants and say, "We are a data-driven department." Now, can they be better? Yeah. And I think that your point is well-taken, is that they need to share that data plus. They have a term, but they're not sharing it plus, right?
But their data is only as good as they get. I personally have called the police numerous times and the dispatcher says, "Well, we're not gonna send anybody out." We pretty much may have, yeah. So, we're not even getting the data. We're not even getting the data.
And this is a common thing. The data is actually being, the mere fact that it's internal and they're picking and choosing which ones they're gonna go to is the problem. Like I said, it's not the fact that we're calling and, you know, we're upset. It's the fact that we just wanna talk to somebody, make sure that they are listening to us, right? Broken plaster, don't clean it up. It's things like that.
A roll call, they call in dispatchers too, because I've complained about them too. And they did have an attitude adjustment conversation.
It's one time versus routinely that dispatchers are called in also.
You have a good point. The officer that was talking to me and said, "It was my fault that everybody got called out." And he wasn't saying that was a bad thing, he just lived without time.
Right, sure. But is it, is it routine that was out of the ordinary?
It was because somebody complained enough that they did it. So, that means that we have to slow down, that we have to complain more as citizens to, well.
Well, it shouldn't, we, yeah, you shouldn't, you wouldn't call. Maybe for this work, we shouldn't have to complain over and over again about the same mess.
We need to change our police department until it does work. And in order to do that, we need to complain that they're not doing the job the way we need it done. Without complaining and so, and assuming that it's done.
I get it.
Yeah, so that's, that's part of the answer too. And I don't like that answer.
You know why?
Right. But that's the fact that if we don't do that, we'll get what we have.
It's not only complaining, it's also holding them accountable.
Well, that's the point, that's the point.
Because if you show the data of how many calls, like everything's in secrecy, right? So, even, even the body cam footage, even all of this extra stuff, all the math money that's going into one particular department with all the data that's there. My whole point is data is useless unless somebody sees the data and somebody outside sees the data.
So, let me give you four in a second, just to finish up on this. What we did in Los Angeles was called community policing. And we went all the way around the country, all right? In Hayward, there is supposedly community policing, but it needs to be a lot stronger. You need, the idea of community policing is that you will know who Officer Cruz is. You will know who this detective is because they actually are called by their first name because they'll be here and actually come here and meet you. And we want as many of the police department to do that as there are cops, not as far available, but as there are cops. Every cop should be rotated through the community so that they meet the community and they know the community, because that's part of the attitude problem, is that they think that either they're special or they think that they're paramilitary or they think that they're separate and need to be separate from us for their safety. Well, that protect and serve, the protect word kinda gives it away, that, "Yeah, I don't want anybody hurt. I never want anybody hurt. I especially don't want you or me hurt." Because that's what we have a police for, is to keep us safe. Like you said, how are we gonna keep us safe? So, I think with community policing, where our cops actually become part of our community is what we have to shoot for ever. We have to, we have to focus on as our goal. Showed that all the data in the world will not get you the comfort that this, "I'm going there because Rita called me, because Harry called me, and I'm on my way to them."
Or because nobody I know called me.
Because nobody I know called me.
Just somebody calls you.
They're in, but they're in my community. They're in my community. I don't, cops don't feel that. They're in my community. Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, sorry. Was anybody in the neighborhood alert meeting last night? That's okay. FYI, and I'm gonna try and get this published, they did share data and I don't know yet, you know, where that else, where else that is going. We used to do quarterly, we did used to do quarterly reports. We shifted, police chiefs that went away. We're figuring out how to get that back. But none of that is relevant. What is relevant is that we have, the report last night that they were sharing was about burglaries, actually a decline, a city decline in burglaries. Which I thought was fascinating because I've heard, I too have heard, you know, lots of concerns about that. So, I'm gonna do my best to get that shared so that people can see those reports. It was part of the satisfaction survey that the police department went in. Anybody participate in that?
Mm-hmm.
Good, okay. The police department just did a satisfaction survey in terms of hopefully to gather some of this stuff, which then becomes a training. But to actually answer your question, what would I do is, right now, our police department, the police departments all across the country are down on staffing. You know, we are covering the beats, et cetera, but there's just not enough people doing it with their retirement, which is the least, most expensive, least effective way to do that, but my goal is people unprotected. But it has all kinds of implications around training and all that stuff. So, one of the focuses that I've had, so, our fire department, our insurance, actually, so, fair point about the car insurance. Our home insurance actually goes down when you move into Hayward because our fire response time is so vast. And part of what the fire department did when they had recruiting issues was that they started partnering with our regional occupational programs. And so, students now from high schools can start learning what it's like to be a firefighter. And then, if they like it, then they now can go through the Shavuah program to become firefighters. And we have a couple of students right now, homegrown, to the point that I was saying here about it being our, and to your point about Hayward first, we're growing our own fire department. And what that does, as Stetica said, about our investment in the community, how people respond. And we have an explorer program. We've had it for years in the department, but a police explorer, but none of those kids become firefighters. So, there's a gap there. So, they're now starting a whole new robust recruitment program as well as interacting with youth to figure out, you know, there's been so much about police right now. It's not always an employment of choice and it's critically important and it's an opportunity to really serve the community. It's a bringing that voice back, helping people understand what the job is and knowing that you grow up in Hayward, you could serve Hayward by being a police officer. That's where we need to go with that.
And just in support of what you just said, if I, a child that our next-door neighbor's choked on a grape, and to all my efforts, it wasn't happening. We called the fire department, they were there in third, in six minutes, six minutes to respond. They got, they're finding out the grape out and the kid is gonna be all right. Well, she is all right, because I hear her complaining. Which I'm happy to hear her complaining, all right? The paramedics in the fire department came back four times to check on her and they had her heart out. They brought stuff for her, they brought toys. They're not, they were very ill and confined. They brought toys for her and they, they brought a sticker, she was wearing a sticker and a badge.
Oh.
And she has a hat, so she's very happy with all that stuff. It was the outreach that I'm talking about, that they made the effort. Well, there are two officers that came too, because when a truck goes out and it's an emergency like this, that could be a life or death situation, police officers come too. Those officers came by twice to check on the kid, by themselves, came by, wanting his own car, so this was after his shift, just wanted to check on the kid and make sure the kid's all right. So, we are having breakthroughs in the attitude problem, but as you acknowledge, we have an attitude problem with everything that we're paying for in the city. And we need to keep working on it to change that attitude problem. And we need programs that actually change it so that, as you said, I'm kindred with attitude is do the damn job and do it effectively. And that's what we need to do, that they say, "Part of my job is to change my attitude to serve you, to serve your needs."
Besides the attitude, you know, I personally don't care necessarily to discuss, you know, people's pay or things like that, but one of the biggest things, including around the area, let alone around the country, is having more social work training for officers. This is very important for a city like Hayward, as I said, versus a city like Hayward. Primarily, one of the things that I even mentioned in this topic is that, you know, we need more mental health representation. When we talk about mental health compensation, when we talk about communication, when we talk about integration, these are all concerns that I have. So, for example, we've had situations where, you know, scary moments where, you know, I had to call nine-one-one to ask for my father's help and asking me, "Does he speak English?" Right? First off, super offensive. I just wanted to say, "Why don't you ask him if he speaks English and then ask me?" Right? Number two is the fact that we live in an earthquake zone and a flood zone, right? We do need to invest in our police and, and fire and basically anything that can protect us in a situation like that. But additional training besides the point-to-chute training is the fact that we definitely need more training regards to mental health. Now, I have a friend who has been working on this campaign and she's a manager of several mental health wellness facilities, one in Hayward. And she has a point like told me over and over and over again, every day that she works, that every single day we have to call the police. We have to call the police because some mentally ill individuals and a largely homeless population that they serve tend to self-medicate. And if they self-medicate, sometimes they're over-medicating or their medication, their actually prescribed medicine, battered each other out in their own body. Now, when they call the police, it's because, and these people are fully trained to work with mental health issues. It's to a point where we can't do anything. This person's becoming violent. Now, we need to talk to somebody that is a little bit bigger than, you know, some other folks. And what ends up happening is that when these individuals defecate on themselves, and again, if you don't know the why, you don't know how, it's the medicine, it's a little bit of mental health mixture and everything, that the officers as well as firefighters have been unprofessional in some of their engagement. And I was very surprised to hear this. And I've actually gone to a couple of different nonprofits that serve these particular types of communities and they all agree. And I've talked to the, the different individuals that I know in the police department as well as fire department, and they have, themselves, requested in a survey done last year that they want more mental health training. Now, if you take a look at our homeless population in Hayward, another reason why public safety is an issue for Hayward is we have a significantly high homeless population, we're hitting roughly about 400, right? The city of Hayward released, the press release says this, 300, but that number's significantly lower than the actual point-in-time count of 397 and we know that number has actually gone up. If you talk to the actual providers for homeless individuals, they have said those numbers have actually gone up. So, I question the misinformation that the city has, has actually issued in their most recent press release, to be completely frank. Now, there are some initiatives, I'm a board member of a boat services that provides housing to low and extremely low-income individuals. We know that if you were to house homeless folks or low-income individuals, their number one thing is that they can focus on their lives, they can focus on the help they need, they can focus on their jobs or their families or their health overall. And the reason why housing has been the number one issue I question all the time is because overall that improves so many different things in a person's quality of life. Now, a boat has a project on Sisferian side that easily housed 150 to 220 individuals. Now, if you were to take that and compare it to our current homeless population, mind you, a lot of people think that homeless people don't have income. They do. They actually have a very fixed income, whether it's for disability, whether it's social security, whether it's some other type of means, they do, but they can't afford it. Right? So, a lot of those people, you have to think domestic violence shelters. A lot of the people in domestic violence relationships, when they leave their spouse or their partner, they need to be in a shelter and the shelter can only house them on average in the area three months at a time. Within those three months, they need to find a job, be able to request their kid, get a license, get all their documentation in paperwork, fight for custody, unit name it, and still work and still have a roof up their head. Now, if we attack some of these social issues, we also make the city safer. With that being said, it's also if you were to remove or house this population of individuals in permanent housing, permanent and affordable housing, housing that's really geared towards serving those individuals, you improve the cleanliness of Hayward, you improve the business, the tourism, families feel safer, break-ins are gonna happen a lot less. It's sizable when you think about it, right?
Let me interrupt you because I know you used to have a board of a boat. And that project came in front of our committee and it's on Depot Road. I've had conversations with the, the homeowners in that area, the neighborhood down the street from it, and I've had extensive conversations with the boat about it. When they were in front of our committee and they're talking about this wonderful facility and is a wonderful facility, and they told us how many people that would be served, they said about 250. It's 125 units, about two, maximum two people to a unit, maximum 250. So, I take the numbers, anywhere between 125 and 250. All right, so my question was, "And how many people from Hayward would you serve?" Because at that time, I was working with your numbers, 300 homeless. I'll accept your numbers, 400 homeless. Fine. Can you take 250 homeless off our streets? It was quiet. It was dead silence. And I said, "Hmm, something's wrong." The council members just were like, "Okay, let's go on this." I said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, stop." I stopped the mayor. I interrupted the mayor. I apologized. All right, I asked, "How many people from Hayward? I want an answer." And they looked at me and they said, "Well, you know, listen up." I said, "How many people from Hayward?" Five. Five. That would be, at the best, we'd get five of our homeless people into that, and we'd give $20,000 to that project and another project, and we'd get five people off the streets in Hayward. It's, I'm not blaming the boat, I'm not blaming anybody. It's the way of funding. If there's funding from any outside source like the federal government or the state government or the county government, then you have to accept applications from the federal level, the state level, the county level and the local level. That left us with five people. We're not dealing with our homeless problem here. We're not dealing with our homeless problem here. And honestly, we've had this conversation before. What's necessary to end homelessness in Hayward is the political will to do so. The homeowners down there are furious. Staff told us that they went around to every homeowner, and they were just ecstatic that something was going to be done with that project. And they told them what the project was, and they said, "That's fine with us." When I went to talk to them, first of all, they cursed me out. I said, "I'm a challenger. I'm not a member of the city council. I'm a challenger. I want to get on the city council, but I'm not a member of the city council." And that didn't stop them. That didn't stop them at all. They gave me a whole bucket full. And it was not nice. All right, they didn't want their house, their home values lowered by having homeless down the block. They said, "These people are going to come, and they're going to defecate on our lawn, and they're going to do this and that." I said, "That's not what this is all about. This is about a place that did the shelter and 24-hour onsite services. They have social workers there, they have security guards there. They would be gated, they would be safe, and they would actually have a community room that trains them for jobs so they can actually get out and become actually members of our community, functioning members of our community." I said, "This is great, but not for five people in Hayward." I want 100 people in Hayward. I want 400 to go to Hayward police facilities.
So we actually pushed back, just at the front of the building, that we will house Hayward first. And why would we change the plan like this? But Carl's waiting.
Oh, I thought you would talk some more about the homeless.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I think you work with a lot of the homeless, so you might want to add to that. That's why I was pointing at you. But if you want to continue with that, or I can change the topic if you'd like.
Thank you, and thank you so much.
I have something to get one question in.
Go ahead.
So to change the topic about the, I have a question about downtown specific plan. Thank you. I have a question about the downtown specific plan. So the company that developed this plan just released the latest update on that yesterday, actually, City Hall. I just want to know what your thoughts are on the downtown specific plan. What do you think about the plan that had a large roundabout of Jackson Mission and B Street intersection? And what do you think about the process so far?
So the process has been a little uneven in terms of community input. The intent is there, it got stalled for a while, but it's back. So I appreciate the, like I said at the beginning, community input is everything to me.
Right.
I haven't gotten the data, again, about the roundabout how it really would work. I've seen the preliminary sketches, but I haven't. I'm not on the infrastructure committee that saw it on Wednesday. I've read the report, but I couldn't be in the room. So I don't have enough data to give you a good opinion on that roundabout specifically. It's intriguing, but I don't know for sure. But what I do, what I'm excited about is, both short-term and long-term, solutions to the loop to attract business downtown who are starting. I mean, the holes are starting to get filled in. But really looking at long range, what is the there there that we want to have that thrive? How high do we go? Is the transit hub density makes sense there, but how high? And how do you complement the existing structure? So, you know, don't put six stories next to one story. You know, put in view quarters, you know, make sure there's light and air in the project. So, you know, the idea of staggering the killer merge, you know, the Jackson foothill, or the Jackson Mission merge that everybody hates.
Right.
I had asked for that when I first got on council. I did it for a little while, then it went away, so...
I just asked the, I forget his name, but he's a, he does a traffic.
Fred?
I think so, right. Because I looked at that, and of course, me and I'm sure many other people have asked him about that merge right there, where everything turns green at the same time. And my, and many suggestions, I'm sure, is to put one side green and the other side red, and the other side green, so that they won't merge into each other. And he really was against that.
Yeah.
And what are you going to do, to change his mind or to...
He needs to be ordered to do something.
Be ordered to do that, right.
And he needs to be told who he's working for. If he's not working, then Kelly needs to actually order him. Since he works for Kelly, and Kelly works for the city council, and the city council works for the city, then Kelly needs to tell him, "Do your job." And that is part of the job. At Castro Street in Oakland, 980, they had the same situation. The traffic's coming out this and that. They did, they put two signals that can't see each other, they're blind. It says, "No right turn" on red, and it works perfect. And why did they do that? Because there was too much glass piled up at that corner where people were just not waiting for someone there. I've seen the glass here, and Barbara told me that there's not glass, and there's not accidents, and it's all in my head. There's glass all over the street. There's glass all over the street, and that's, it's ridiculous. But then, you know what? You take away the loop, and this problem doesn't exist. If you take away, if Foothill Boulevard is two-way streets from 238 to the bridge...
But that's a longer-term issue, while the street lights can be immediately fixed.
Exactly.
They can be immediately fixed.
The one chance, the only thing that I want data on is, what I was told before was that the problem, the fear was the backup. For, I mean, right now, the issue is bad, and I don't want to make it worse. So I just want to understand the mechanics of that a little bit more. I'm a traffic engineer, but I want to understand it a little bit more.
And I have time. I actually have a fear of...
I'm still willing to push for it.
You have intelligence. Intelligent signals deal with all of that, where they can tell that there's a stacked forming. They let that line go first, and they let go for longer until it's empty, and then the other line comes in.
And actually, I have a fear of it backing up even more. Looking at this plan and seeing all the streets being, lanes being shortened down. I mean, you're going from whatever Jackson 4 or 5 lane road down to... I, to me, that feels like, I know we want to slow down traffic in downtown, I understand that, but are we going to end up with a huger mess on our hands if that happens?
You talked about a circle. I would pose a circle for exactly that, using the purpose of the roundabout is to slow traffic down. And that's why they have it in London, that's why they have it in Paris. Of course, if you see them in London and Paris, you wonder who's slowing down. But that's not the point. Here in Hayward, we're not used to these things. And we're not going to feel solid. It's going to be a traffic jam to slow down. So...
Plus, it's a two-lane road that you're changing coming.
You're to bottleneck. But traffic signals and intelligent traffic signals, I would usually say, this is not rocket science. In fact, it is rocket science, because that's where those intelligent signals came from. They came from NASA. They're available to us now. All you have to do is install and use them. And city staff needs to be told, "This is what we want." Make it, don't tell me how it can't work.
Right.
Tell me how you're going to make it work. Tell me how you're going to put it in place. And I'm a planner. This is my bottleneck. I'm not a traffic planner, but this is my bottleneck. And I've seen this in many cities, and this is what you do. And with that...
Well, with that, she, Aisha left. Because you didn't have time to do the closing or anything.
You guys will be free to go. I'm Didicus Roberts, and I'm running for Hayward City Council.
I'm Sarah Landen, and I'm running for reelection in Hayward City Council this November 6th.